I hereby reconvene this September 10, 2013, meeting of the Marion County School Board at 6:00 PM. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your cellphone or put them on vibrate. Uh, Board, I'd like to bring up our Deputy Superintendent of Curriculum, Mr. Rick Langford, and he's going to handle our inspiration and pledge this evening. Mr. Langford.
Good evening, Board. Pleasure to be with you all tonight. Inspiration, I'm going to make a presentation here which I think is very inspirational. Uh, I'm going to ask Ms. Teresa Boston Ellis if she'll come up. Ms. Ellis is going to be representing our Finance Department. Uh, as you have heard in the past, for the thirteenth year in a row, they have been awarded this designation, and so we're going to do that. I think tonight's a most appropriate night to do that. Of course, we've got the budget on the agenda tonight, and they have worked so hard to get ready for that. In addition, Ms. Ellis's birthday was Sunday, and she was here working on the, on the budget, trying to get it ready. So I think this award is, is just a testament to what the, the fine work that all of them in the Finance does. I'll read it to you. As you can see, in the past, it's been a, a nice little certificate with a, a cheap frame around it. Well, now it's a piece of granite, so this is going to be really good. This is given by the Governor Finance Officers Association, and it says Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Presented to School District of Marion County, Florida. And as I said, for the thirteenth year in a row, Ms. Boston Ellis, congratulations. You, uh, you and your entire department do such a great job, and you are an inspiration to all of us.
Thank you. No additional funding.
I know.
Thank you. On behalf of the Finance Department, and we have two of our members here, Alice Posada, which she leads the charge in preparing the annual financial report, which becomes the CAFR, or the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and also Jennifer Cole, who's an accountant in our department as well. We stand before you with, with a lot of people assisting us in this preparation, and it goes all the way back down to the schools who prepare and charge and record expenses at the correct function and object level. We're excited to win this award. This began with Mr. Steve Barrett, and I would like you to know that he came by my office today and did a happy dance that he didn't have to do, participate in the budget process. But he started this legacy, and we're just very proud and honored that we've been able to carry it on. It's, it's been a tremendous year for us, even though this is for the 11-12 year. We have, uh, we really had to, you know, get really tight this year. We had fewer staff. We had a new, uh, computer program that was implemented. We had people who were actually retiring and leaving, but I, it's just a testament to the staff that is in the Finance Department, that we pulled together and got it done, and we're still speaking to each other. So thank you for this recognition, and we also appreciate your support, administration, as well as Board members, and we appreciate your patience, especially in this last budgeting session. Thank you very much.
I personally want to thank you for all you do. Your office, I'll have to share a little, um, something that happened in her office here a week or two ago. I'm gonna tackle on you. She, I was working with her, and y'all know me. I wasn't being real patient. And she was gathering figures for me, and we were laughing together as she was working diligently, and she said, "Well, I have to go to my doctor's appointment." Remember?
Yes.
And she said, "I don't know how I'm gonna explain to him that my blood pressure's up." And then she said, "I guess I'll just have to explain to him they've never met Mrs. Stacy." And I shared with her that my husband said, "I should never have a heart attack because I am a carrier." Okay?
Yes.
But thank you for all you do. I could not be more appreciative for the help that I get from the Finance Department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Will you do the pledge?
At this time, we're gonna ask that everyone please stand and face the, the flag, and let's recite our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, congratulations to the Finance Department. Thank you, Board.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the agenda for the September 10, 2013, School Board meeting with the materials in the Board packet. Those materials distributed to Board members at the meeting. The audio recording and DVD included as part of the official record of the meeting.
Board may have a motion on the Superintendent's recommendation.
So move.
Second.
Move by Ms. Boynton, second by Ms. Ely. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It should pass five-zero. Please lock your votes in electronically. Board, may I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August 8, 2013 Administrative Briefing and Work Session, the August 13, 2013 School Board Meeting, the August 15, 2013 Administrative Briefing and Work Session. Motion, a second, please.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Boynton, second by Ms. Ely. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It should pass five-zero. Lock your votes in. Which I'm having trouble doing. And it does pass five-zero. May I have a motion to adopt the final budget resolution for fiscal year 2012, 2013. Board members, and before I get the motion, this is just a, a requirement. It, it ends the, the past fiscal year for us, so we have to do that. I need a motion and a second, please.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Boynton, second by Mr. James. And this will cover number 29, the General Fund, number 30, Internal Service Fund, number 31, Special Revenue Fund. May I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Full of them, sir.
Seeing none, all, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Please lock your votes in. Okay, it does pass five-zero. Ms. Superintendent.
The Board is required by statute to issue an annually updated five-year work program of all projected school system capital outlay construction projects and major maintenance projects. The associated project costs are equal to the 2013-14 capital outlay budget. Upon approval, the five-year work program will be submitted to the Department of Education for their approval.
Madam Secretary, do you have anybody?
Uh, just asking for the motion. It was on the bottom of the other page.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. May I have a motion on the, I'll get my sheet. May I have a motion to approve the five-year district facilities work program for fiscal year 2013, 2014 through fiscal year 2017, 2018.
Seven.
Okay. Motion by Mr. James, and who is the second? Ms. Boynton? And we've had the, the Superintendent's, all right. Board members, discussion?
Clear.
That's it? Uh, public hearing. For our public hearing, is there anyone present who wishes to address the five-year district work program for fiscal year 2013, 2014 through fiscal year 2017, 2018? Seeing none, did we have anybody sign up?
Yes, sir.
All right. And I'll bring it back to the Board.
Question.
All right, Mr. James moves the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Board members and people that are in attendance tonight, the budget process involves a public hearing to be held in the following order. We roll back rate computation and tentative budget amended to conform to final budget. Resolution determining revenues and millage level, and then the final budget. Ms. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, the total millage to be levied is less than the rolled back rate by 4.81%. The required local effort millage rate is less than the roll back rate by 6.59%. Each school board participating in the state allocation of funds for the current operation of schools must levy the millage set for its required local effort from property taxes. As a result of work sessions held by the Board since the adoption of the tentative budget of $456,817,916 on July 30, 2013, the following changes have been made and have been incorporated into the proposed final budget. An increase in expenditures for Sunrise Elementary and Evergreen Elementary Schools' Extended Learning, the reconciliation of staffing plan, and student services contracts. A reduction in expenditures for transportation, custodial and maintenance, unemployment compensation, health insurance, and staff development training. An increase in revenue for Blue Cross Blue Shield ProShare. Supplements paid at 100%. Preservation of a nominal amount for IUPAT, MESP, and nonrepresented staff. An increase in certified substitute daily rate of pay to $132 a day plus health insurance. Reallocation of project costs in the capital projects fund due to rollover balances and the district's five-year facilities work plan. And finally, changes in the beginning fund balance.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the Superintendent's recommendation that the Board amend the adopted tentative budget to conform to the proposed final budget for fiscal year 2013, 2014. Your motion, a second, please.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. James, second by Ms. Ely. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the Board concerning the rollback rate and/or amended tentative budget? Madam Secretary, do we have anybody?
No speakers.
We do not. All right. Okay. Board members, do you have any?
I do. I mean, I understand we had to have some deep slashes in our budget, and I do have some concerns that we actually went in and raised the salary of some of our employees because they're on a contract basis, and my major concern, as I explained, first to Mr. Tomlin, was making sure that we had a fund balance at a level that I felt comfortable with, although the Board may feel comfortable with a 3.78, I really don't. And also, I have some concerns of, you know, the morale issue that could, could come up from this. I just want everyone to know, all of our staff, to know how important each role is to us, from transportation to custodial workers. All of those positions are, are part of a service that provide to our, our students, and it's critical for them to feel that they are just important, you know, as the raise that they understand we would be giving if we approved this budget. It's, it's critical for them to understand that custodial workers, you're important for the health of our schools, bus drivers, you keep our children safe, transporting them to, to and from school. I do have reservations with the appropriations of funds, how we allocated our funds, but I do realize we need to pass our budget. Just wanted to know my feelings on it. Thank you.
Any other member of the Board?
I feel like we spent a lot of time last week, in the previous weeks, working on this budget. We had a lot of good dialogue, and I, I feel like we can come together as, as a school board to, to agree on the final budget.
All right. Anyone else? If not, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I do believe that motion is gonna pass five-zero.
Ms. Boynton, there we go.
And it does. Ms. Superintendent.
The School Board of Marion County, Florida proposes a total millage rate of 7.3390, which is less than the roll back rate of 7.7095 mils by 4.81%. I recommend the Board adopt the resolution determining revenue and millages to be levied for fiscal year 2013, 2014.
May I have a motion on the Superintendent's recommendation?
So move.
Second.
All right. Let me add this in for Ms. Pluck, resolution determining the revenue and millages to be levied for fiscal year 2013, 2014. And that was a motion up by Mr. James and second by Ms. Ely. This is now a public hearing. Do we have anyone that has signed up to speak?
Yes, sir.
All right. And I'll bring it back to the Board. Board members?
Question. Question.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And it passes five-zero. Ms. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman and Board members, I recommend the Board adopt the final budget for fiscal year 2013, 2014 in the amount of $456,427,819.
Board may I have a motion on the Superintendent's recommendation that the Board adopt the final budget for two, uh, for fiscal year 2013, 2014 in the amount of $456,427,819.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Ely, second by, by Mr. James. This is a, a public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
On the final hearing, yes. Chris Altobello.
Chris Altobello, 2020 Northeast, 43rd Street, Ocala, Florida. I am here representing the Marion Education Association and like to talk at first about a couple of items that were discussed at the recent budget work session. Notwithstanding, and you know our continued objection to the use of certified subs, but you had not only given them a raise, a substantial raise in their salary, but you also included an insurance benefit. And as I was combing through my notes, I did not take down or, or understand if that insurance benefit was the full insurance benefit, meaning did they have the opportunity to purchase family coverage as a regular employee would? So I, you know, according to Chairman Crawford, I didn't make a formal request of the Board, so I'll do that, but I just wanted to throw that out because it wasn't discussed, and as a member of the Insurance Committee, it may have an impact on, on our budget. I don't know if it will. There was another item said during the work session that concerned me, and it was mentioned that certified substitutes knew what, when you guys were discussing, you know, paying them, it was mentioned that they knew what they were going to get paid when they took their position. And I would show you this handout, which is the last section in our contract, that shows what a teacher can expect to get paid with their experience. I can't tell you how many teachers every year, some new to the district, would call me and tell me that, "I am a 10-year teacher, why am I not getting what's in my contract?" So before we, we, we start making quotes of people knowing what they're going to be paid, I want to remind you that our employees are in the same position when they come to Marion County and they see this, they expect to be paid this, and they're two steps behind. Now, that leads me into the next, my next item, where we are at the negotiating table, and you have just passed, or you're, you're getting ready to, the, the final budget. And I will remind you that, and I'd love to sit down with any one of you because we're not at impasse yet, hopefully we won't be this year, but the budget that you're going to approve contains enough dollars to meet our salary request. And we have presented our salary request at the table, and it is my hope that we act on our request as expeditiously as we did the certified subs last week, because imagine the shot in the arm, Ms. Boynton, that we can give morale-wise to our employees here if we don't drag out negotiations until two weeks before school ends like we have in the past two years. So I'm confident that you as a Board will be as creative and, and work as diligent to support the nearly 5,000, not just teachers, that have been shoveling the coal the longest here in Marion County and providing the quality education that you believe we should and that our children deserve. So I appreciate you listening to me tonight, and it is our hope that we can wrap up these negotiations sooner than later, and we, again, will, will present, we've got a session on Thursday. It's my hope that we actually spend some time talking about it, because our teachers, our support personnel, our other represented people have gone a long time, and they feel as though budgets have been balanced on their backs, and it's hard to argue that. So thank you, Board.
Ms. Pluck, do we have anyone else?
That's it.
All right. Board, we have a, a motion on, on the floor. Any discussion? Seeing none? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And please lock your votes in. And it passes five-zero.
Four.
Oh, four, excuse me, four.
And Ms. Boynton voted against.
Okay. Four-one, I stand corrected. One more item to make.
Skip all of that.
Let's skip this.
Yeah.
Okay. And you going right to the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the receipt of the annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2013, which was provided prior to the meeting, and with the exception of items C-13, C-21, which have been placed on the regular agenda for discussion. I need a motion and a second.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Motion by, I believe, Ms. Ely, and second by, by Mr. James. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion passes, I believe, five-zero. And it does. May I have a motion to approve the updated 2013, 2018 district strategic plan? And a motion, a second, please.
So move.
Motion by Mr. James.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ely. Uh, Ms. Stacy, you withdrew this item.
I withdrew our strategic plan because I wanted to read something that I received from a teacher. I do have my public forum that goes day and night with the teachers and the people, and the citizens in this community. The teachers, I've talked with them about our goals. I don't see how we're gonna meet our goals when we don't have certified, properly, proper teachers in the classrooms. But it's a goal, and I don't know that it's realistic, but, and I normally don't go along with unrealistic goals, but tonight I'm gonna go along with that. But I do want to address one of the comments. One of the goals, goal number one, we want to, our goal is to have respectful schools. That's one of the parts of goal one. We all want that, but what's happened in the schools, the teachers are handled with total disrespect. I cannot begin to tell you, now that I have opened up my public Facebook forum to the public, the number of teachers that contact me all hours of the day and night. Um, I was on the phone with a teacher tonight and couldn't hardly get out the door. I promised the teachers that I would read something that was given to me by a high school teacher. I've spoken to them about our, um, discipline programs, and there's something called PBS that apparently is quite widely used in the state and probably in the nation. It's the newest gig, I guess, for handling discipline. And it talks about, I guess, you give a lot of awards and stickers, and, you know, if they're good for five minutes, they get a sticker. If they're good for three minutes, they get a sticker, apparently, based upon what some of the elementary teachers are telling me. So I asked one of the high school teachers if she knew anything about PBS, and here's what she wrote me back. She said, "I'm not sure what the PBS is." That may be an elementary school term, and possibly it is. Possibly it's used more in the elementary schools with the stickers and the awards. But here's the problem with that. If guidance or deans won't intervene to assist the teacher when a child has misbehaved, then the kid returns to class with more attitude than before. Many teachers do not write referrals unless a student has been terribly rude with swear words or some other totally unacceptable behavior. We need action, and we need it now. I would prefer the deans realize that the child needs an attitude adjustment, but too often, deans take the child's side. Kids have lied, they have tweaked the story to suit themselves, or the deans just assume the teachers have no classroom management skills. And the teachers are reporting that they're afraid to send the students to the, um, office because then their teacher evaluation will be negative on them if they have referrals to the office, and I am finding out that to be the case after speaking to some of the So, the RTI, or Three Before Me, or whatever they call the program of the day, the program negatively affects classroom conduct. Deans tell teachers to document all the actions they have taken before writing the referral to the dean's office. Teachers are just documenting away. Teachers think it's just too time-consuming to comply with all of these requests and all of this documentation, and then they solve the problem by not writing their referral. The class is disrupted, and the disrespectful behavior continues. It seems like a lose-lose situation for us teachers. I heard it said, not necessarily here, by an AP and a dean. I overheard the conversation. The discipline was improving because referrals were down. We were told that here at the Board also. She said, "They don't want referrals because it makes the school look bad." So they've just made it so hard for the teachers to make a referral that the teachers don't do it because they don't want their classroom management skills challenged. But encroaching on the teachers' time by documenting misconduct three times within the classroom and then writing the referral reduces their referral count, making them look effective because the students pulled three stunts but hasn't gotten sent to the office yet. Just passes the behavior back to the teacher who was already on paperwork overload. As far as cause and effect goes, I would say it doesn't necessarily follow the RTI improves conduct. I hope this answers your inquiry, and thanks for asking. I just wanted to share with the public and the television, if you parents out there are finding that you, we are having discipline problems in our schools, the teachers are telling me you are right. And that's all I had to say. Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Any other member of the Board? Mr. James?
I just wanna just share this with you in the area of discipline, 'cause I know the Gilman's know I did a lot of this stuff. Discipline is a real interesting thing. Discipline is, and I used to use this analogy sometimes- So, when we think in terms of discipline, I just want to remind all of us, we have to look at what we're really asking our kids to do, because discipline is in the eye of the beholder in many instances. Was the kid disciplined that went directly to the class, to the office? Or was the kid disciplined that stopped off at a friend's and then went to the office? Which one of those kids was disciplined? And that's, when I hear this, I just wanna make sure that we really look at what we're saying and what we're doing when we look at our discipline program. Because when I get these, when I, at some point, I know we got those things, and we got these things where the kid is not doing exactly what I want him to do. So, I always just caution us when I hear these things, and that's where I am with it.
I just wanted to encourage teachers, if you are having problems, whether you're elementary, middle school, high school, with the situation that Ms. Stacy said, please go directly to your principal to talk to them about that and let them know your concerns because it needs to be handled first within the school. And then beyond that, we've got other people in the district that can help, but it definitely needs to be taken care of first by the principal. So, after the dean, the guidance counselor, go to the principal and see what, share your concerns with him or her.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Well, I'm just gonna support what you were saying, and you too, Mr. James, and also to know we have a department that's real, with Ms. Viall Nello, that if you wanted to share some of your ideas so that maybe we can make it a little bit better, I think that's a good way to, and most of all, share that with your principal. We're here for your support, and thank you for bringing it to our attention that you had a concern like that.
Thank you. Very good. Anybody else? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion should pass five zero.
Mr. James. There we go.
Perfect. And it does. May I motion to approve the real estate sale and purchase agreement pursuant, to pursue land for the construction of a second driveway at Legacy Elementary School? And a motion and a second, please.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Boynton, second by Ms. Ely. Board members, discussion?
The sooner we get that driveway put in, the safer the entrance and exit will be. Right now, there's only one road going in, so I'll help them build the road if they need my help.
Yes, ma'am. I think the, and Superintendent, correct me, I think the game plan is to try to have it done no later than the time we come back from the Christmas vacation. Correct. And that also, hopefully means at the same time we're going to get the sidewalking into, so. Yes. Lot of work while they're away, so in a short period of time. All right, any other? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five zero. And it does. May I motion to approve the recommendation firms of DDC Engineering Incorporated, SGM Engineering Incorporated, and Verando Engineering Incorporated for continuing contracts, mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineering services for the fiscal year 2013-2014. Any a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Boynton, and second by Ms. Ely. Ms. Stacy, you withdrew this item.
Yes, seem to be the only one withdrawing things. I'm sorry, but I had some questions. I was looking at the three names that were on the list. The bottom one, number three, Verando Engineering, was the engineering firm in Marion County. Given the fact that in years past, I remember even on our website, Kevin, you might remember, we, as I, I don't remember exactly the way it went, but there was something on the website that showed our top twenty, our twenty most recent schools and our fourteen top energy-efficient schools. There was something, somewhere, anyway, in some information I had, I saw. And when was that removed from the website?
I don't know, not over the website.
Oh, okay. I thought you, I thought you were in communications part, okay. We had the top, the last twenties, there were twenty schools that we had built, and they looked at the most energy-efficient ones, and the fourteen most energy-efficient schools were the ones designed by Verando Engineering. So, when I saw that he was ranked third, and the two out-of-town companies were ranked over him, I decided to call other professionals in the engineering world to see their position on Verando Engineering. So, I thought the best place to start would be with, right here on our consent agenda, we spoke about the architectural firms that we preferred. So, I called the number-one ranked architect on our list. I won't say the name for lots of reasons, but the board knows the top-ranked architect out of the top three or four that was on the ranking for our under-two-million-dollar projects. And I simply said, "If you needed an architect to do a fair, I mean, if you needed a mechanical engineer to do a fairly large project, who would you use?" Without, without even taking a breath. He said, "Verando Engineering." So, that took care of the architect's side, because they're the ones that hire engineers. So, then, I decided to go to the civil side, the civil engineers. I looked on our list to see, right out of this agenda, who our top-ranked civil engineers were that we would be going to, in this school system, to get assistance, and I called them. I called the ranked number-one, highest-ranked per-hour construction committee, and I asked him, "If you were gonna hire an engineer for mechanical engineering, who would you hire for a large project?" "Oh, Verando Engineering." Well, so then I picked up the phone and called number-two civil engineer on the list, and he said, "They don't get any better than Verando Engineering." I've worked with him for twenty, for ten years, with the majority of my work, and I would lay down anything and trust what Verando Engineering said on the mechanical engineering side. Well, I also happen to know, because I know some of the contractors that were involved at Legacy, that over Labor Day weekend, Legacy Elementary had a problem with one of the switches either shocking people or something like that. So, immediately, they contacted Verando Engineering, he's the mechanical engineer, to go see what the contractor did wrong on that project. It was Saturday, Labor Day weekend. Mr. Verando spent two, ten hours on that project. He didn't just look at the fixture that had a problem, he went through them all. So, I guess I'm very confused why this, our construction committee, you know, and I plan on hopefully, and through the workshops and that sort of thing, to find out why we aren't using local businesses, because it's the local businesses that's paying our taxes, and if we don't pass a tax, it's because the local businesses didn't support us because we don't support them. So, therefore, that's my concern. I will vote for this, but I would like Mr. Knight to rethink his thinking on this. Why we would choose, okay, okay.
First, let me start off with, do you understand the list? The list is the three, so we're asking for the board to accept the three on the list.
But I'm concerned that he's ranked third out of three.
Well, the criteria used isn't, did he come out in Labor Day? Because we had a number of our staff there, too, all weekend.
Yeah, he was there.
But part of that's an obligation. He designed the building. If there's a problem, obviously, if you designed the building...
But I don't know that the engineer himself would be here from Orlando. He would send a worker?
They would if we had the same problem, absolutely. It's part of requirement of their contract, quite frankly.
But they would send someone, he came himself, and that's what, that's what Mr. Verando...
No, the engineer of record would have to go because they're the ones that sign and seal the plans, and they're absolutely responsible for what goes on in those plans. Matt Verando himself, and I've known him for a number of years before I came to work for the school system. As far as where he fell in the ranking, well, it's a matter of your submissions to the committee, meeting a criteria that's expected, and your interview. You can be a great engineer but have terrible paperwork, and there's gonna be a point where that is affecting your score. It's not affecting his score to a point where we don't want to use him. We've had him on the list every year but last year because he failed to submit for annual services last year.
And I under, and that, I would like to address that also. He got here one minute, and was told, "You are one minute late," and we've discussed that, Mr. Crawford, that type of situation, and he was told he could not submit because he was one minute late.
Well, he was actually two, which is only sixty seconds late, but this is why there's an issue. There are legal ramifications if you accept a bid or a submission beyond a public posted time. It would be the same as if you are bidding at a $10 billion project and you're thirty seconds late, and they accept you. Everybody else got theirs in on time, and you did not.
Except that in our bid, in our bid documents, we make allowances for unusual circumstances, and it's up to us to our senior document.
Well, it's considered minor. Yes. Mrs. Morris has been involved in those situations in the past.
And if he's sixty seconds late, there's no way any of the bids could be compromised because none of them haven't opened yet. He's not in range.
Well, in this case, it's not bids, but I guess it begs the question, if he's four miles from my office and I've got people coming from three hours away, how come he's late and everybody else is on time?
You know something? I guess...
You have to wonder if that's reflected in the project.
But when you're evidently not, because the top architect you chose and the top two engineers you chose, he is their top choice also.
Well, architects have different relationships, and I know this from being in the design profession myself. They go back many years, and it usually has to do with their working relationship with that particular engineer. The second thing is civil engineers never hire mechanical engineers, anyway.
I didn't say they did. I said the architect did.
Yeah, but you said you talked to some civil engineers.
Just because they were in the industry, and they recommended...
Well, they do roadwork mostly, but since we don't air-condition roads...
Well, it sounds to me like you really have a personality issue with Mr. Verando.
Absolutely not. It has nothing to do with that. It has to do with, we publish criteria that every engineer is expected to submit on, discuss, and show us as a school district, A, how they would protect taxpayers' interests, B, how they would design a system that's gonna become efficient for us to use, not only utilize, but also to maintain, and C, do they understand the work that we have to do. Schools are different than a typical business, and there are all kinds of criteria that we would have to meet that nobody else has to meet. Mr. Verando has a lot of experience in schools, but that's one of several different criteria that he's expected to address. I sat in on his interview, I've looked over his submittals.
So, it's a very subjective interview, then?
Well, it's a little of both. That's why you do the interview. You know, it's not, you know, what color is this? Hold it up, is it green or orange? It's more a matter of how you discuss, just like you would interview an employee. If they showed up late to the interview and didn't answer the questions properly, despite the fact they may have a degree in the field, you might question, well, they're certainly qualified, but can they get the particular jobs we have done, A, on time, B, under the budget, and C, without any issues?
Well, given the fact that Mr. Verando has quite a reputation for designing very energy-efficient buildings, and by the way, he is the engineer of record for Citrus County schools.
Yes, he's on their list as well.
He is the engineer of record there, so...
And he's gonna be on this list if you pass this list, too.
Yes. Well, I'm concerned that he's ranked third. And I guess, you know, if a lot of it is just symbolic, you know, symbolism where it's kind of like all subjective and it really doesn't matter, I guess whenever we go for a tax increase, the businesses in this community can give us a symbolic tax increase.
That's not what I'm here to discuss, Mrs. Stacy, but it has nothing to do with symbolism. It's required in the statutes. If you read statute, I'd be happy to get you a copy. It actually tells us, the school boards, what criteria they're to consider when they're hiring a professional. Obviously, they have to have the taxpayer's interest in mind. How does the taxpayer's interest convey to them? That's through the criteria that we have when we go to select them in the first place. And from there, each project we do, we outline what has to be done and what our goals are.
Well, I do not believe you're being factual. I do believe our bid documents allow for minor discrepancies, and I think being one minute late coming through the door...
That was last year, so I don't see the relevance this year, but...
Well, I think the mere fact that he was turned down indicates there must be some kind of little issue going on or something makes me uncomfortable.
Mrs. Stacy, I can't be clear enough. If you wanna open a process up to a challenge, that's the first way to do it. If everybody has to meet criteria and you make an exception because you like somebody that's showing a favoritism, that is absolutely open to a legal challenge. And the process for that is long and lengthy. It has to be brought before a special magistrate in Tallahassee.
It is, Mr. Knight. I fully understand construction documents, and he could, and we do make allowances for that in our construction documents. Okay? We don't even have to talk about that.
That's fine. If we could flip the time back to last year, I guess we could talk about that issue. Again, I don't see the relevance to this year. He scored high enough to make the cut. He is an engineer we've had on the list a long time. We welcome the fact that he was interested in applying for services this year. Not sure what else there is to say, except the fact that he obviously scored high enough to make the list, and so we're asking the board to accept the recommendations of the committee, which include the firm of Verando Engineering.
And I will pass that, but I am concerned that the top architect in the county and the top two engineers that we've ranked chose Mr. Verando, and you did not, but that's for another day, I guess.
Yes, well, it's for the committee, not for me personally. Number one, and number two, the architects can choose who they'd like to work with, as do we, and we happen to choose him. As far as who's better than somebody else, is a pickup truck better than a car? I guess it depends on what you're driving and why.
Any other member of the board?
Let me say this to Mr. Knight. Thank you, and you do a lot for us here. I'm sure the number-one question would be on the second column, after the first column, after the names. In scoring, SCGM scored one oh, one oh, hundred and four. What was the top amount of points in that column, in this column, that could they get?
I believe the top amount of points in any of the columns is 180.
180.
And it's a combination of fifty percent of the submittal from the first go-around and a hundred percent of the interview score from the second go-around, and that makes the total score.
I mean, I just, I support local, you know, local businesses. I'm on the board, total board doors, I'm sure. Just wanna thank you for submitting this to us and the committee that put this together. I know one of the concerns is Verando Engineering is one of the, is here locally, and I do, I mean, I know them personally, myself.
Known them for a long time.
And I understand her concerns, but I also understand your process. So, I'm sure that any, any, anything, any other things that concerns, we'll probably have a private meeting with you to address those, you know.
Absolutely, I welcome it. We brought this process. Mr. Crawford's been on the board probably longer than anybody, but as he knows and some of you that have been on the board more than a year know that this process is long and lengthy. It's been around a long time. It's been time-tested. It's been reviewed by every board that's ever convened, including the board attorney. Process is certainly fair. Mr. Verando has been picked every time he's been submitted, he has submitted, and for good reason.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Oops, something happened.
And the motion passes five zero. May I motion to approve the following donations. Twenty-five hundred dollars to Bellevue Elementary School from their business partner, Bellevue United Methodist Church, via the Public Education Foundation. Fifteen hundred to community technical and adult education from Star and Shield Services, LLC. Two thousand five hundred dollars to Dr. NH Jones Elementary School from their business partner, Dr. Mahdi, via the Public Education Foundation. Eight thousand two hundred eighty-four dollars to H Street Elementary School from H Street Elementary School, PTO. Two thousand dollars to Forest High School from Fox Fire Realty. Science equipment valued at six thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars to Forest High School from J. Avon Frohoffer. One thousand two hundred dollars to Hillcrest Public School from Jeffrey L. Saylor, CPA. Eight thousand two hundred fifty-two dollars nineteen cents to Shady Hill Elementary School from the Shady Hill Elementary School, PTA. One thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars fourteen cents to Vanguard High School from the Knights Home Run Club. And two thousand five hundred dollars to Westport High School from their business partner, Moreau Regional Medical Center, via the Public Education Foundation. Board, I need a motion and a second, please.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Boynton, second by Ms. Ely. Any discussion on this? And we'll just vote?
I can say something.
Wait, ma'am, go ahead.
I just wanna thank all of these people who are making donations to the school and know, folks, that this money is going directly to the kids. It's not going into teacher salaries. It has to do with instructional materials and stuff that happens with kids in...
Board, I need a motion in a second, please.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Pointon, second by Ms. Ely. Any discussion on this? And we'll just vote?
I can say something.
Wait, ma'am, go ahead.
I just want to thank all of these people who are making donations to the school and know, folks, that this money is going directly to the kids. It's not going into teacher salaries. It has to do with instructional materials and stuff that happens with kids in schools. And I know that with the effort of the PTAs, you know, fundraising things, you know, they realize the importance of having this money so the school has the options, the internal account money. School has the options to spend this money the way they need to spend it. I just want to know how 8th Street and Shady Hill are donating over $8,000. That's incredible, but thank you so much. That's a total of $30,000 that were donated through these donations. Thank you.
Any other board member on that? If not?
No, just excited, too, of the PTOs that are raising the amount of monies, but I will thank you for the business community partners that are steadily supporting education in our community. Thank you.
I agree with you 100%. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And I know that's going to pass, right?
Oh, he's already voted. Not yet.
It's something that I can never get mine on, then. There it goes. All right, and it does. Board members, a few meeting reminders. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, September 19th, 2013, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to receive updates on the extended day program and long-range planning as well as to discuss Board Policy 8.54, naming and renaming of district facilities. We also have an extra work session, which has been scheduled for Thursday, September 26th, for the purpose of determining the board's legislative agenda. And let me just say, board, yesterday there was some discussion about a overall agenda for the Central Florida Coalition that we're a member of and they are, correct, Ms. Superintendent, they were getting, they were going to be sending out last year's, weren't they? And then asking if we wanted to, all the school districts, whether anybody wanted to make any additions, corrections, deletions from that and have it ready for the next meeting that we have scheduled, which is on November 4th, when we'll discuss it at, you know, at that point. So, and one of the things that was brought up, and this is the second time that I've heard the chairman of the Coalition mention this, and I think it's something that, even though we're not in the building mode at the moment, but it might be something that we might want to seriously consider making it part of our agenda, too, is the difference in the requirements that school districts have to build to under the Florida regs versus the regulations that govern charter schools. Apparently charter schools, according to him, and I think we need to look into this and see if it's true, but apparently charter schools are building schools that meet all the basic standards that are required in the state of Florida. Hurricane protection, things along that line. They don't have some of the other stuff that we have to do, some of the hoops that we have to, to jump through that noticeably raise the cost of one of our schools versus what they're having to build. And, you know, having just completed an elementary school, if we could have, you know, even save 25% of the cost, you know, on that, that's money that could have been rolled over to, you know, our reserves at the moment, waiting for the next time that we have a major building project, that money could have been useful, could have clicked a little interest for a while. But it's just something that, and, you know, and we can try to find some space on one of our work sessions that we can have a discussion, and I will ask the Facilities Department if maybe they could give us some examples of where, you know, we have to do certain things and, you know, charter schools don't. And remember, one of the things that we have to do, because in the state of Florida, the school systems are required to provide a shelter space for every person who lives in a trailer, mobile home, whatever you want to call it, that reside in your county. And because of that, every one of our buildings have to be, at least half it has to be specially hurricane-hardened. So it'd be interesting to see how they're meeting some of those requirements and why we're having to do maybe something extra. And so with your permission, I'll try to find a spot that we may have a, and give Mr. Knight and his department a chance to look at it. I, you know, expect him to do it tomorrow, although I know he and I have had discussions about some of the stuff that we have to do versus what some other people don't have to or the charter schools don't have to. But I just thought it was very interesting and the gentleman that, this is a hot-button issue for him, and he is the chairman of the board down.
Jake Wheeler.
Yes, okay. And this is a hot-button issue for him, but I agree because it is a cost, you know, factor to us and we are eventually, when the population starts growing again in this county, and it will, student population, and we're already seeing it this year, look at some of the schools that we are already above what was projected to be there, so, and we're looking at, I can think of two elementary schools right now that we are going to have to have some serious discussion about whether we're going to end up putting portables on those campuses or whether there is a possibility that we can fit a wing onto that campus because those schools are already above, at the 10-day count, they're already above what we predicted we were going to have at the high point for the year. So, you know, this is something we're going to discuss. But it's something that, you know, maybe if it doesn't get entered into the central Florida, maybe it's something we want to just provide the legislators even as a sidebar to our, the issues that we're concerned about and present that as saying, oh, and let me show you how we could save us some money and let us put that money into, you know, additional facilities. Because the money we're talking about can only be used for that purpose and we have to stretch it as much as, you know, as we can because that's also the maintenance money and everything else is tied up in that. Oh, okay. I was looking at my notes and I thought I heard somebody. Let me, I'm trying to think who I haven't started with in a while, so let me go with Ms. Ely. I can't remember. It's been a while, so.
Okay, okay. Been two weeks. I just want to re-
Did you watch your last, okay, okay, well.
She remembers.
I want to remind all of you, tomorrow is the 12th anniversary of 9/11 and I don't know about y'all, but I'm very happy and proud to be an American. A lot of the schools are celebrating. I believe it's up to us to teach our children and grandchildren what exactly happened that day. I was talking to my granddaughters about that and let them know what happened and we're standing strong and we need to be proud of our country. But think about all of those people who perished 12 years ago and say a little prayer for them, but go, United States.
Ms. Pointon.
Well, tomorrow is my sister's birthday, who passed, you know, one year after 9/11, so for me, that's a very emotional day, the entire day, because we were with her on that day. So for the schools to still be involved in keeping their memory of what actually happened and how we came through, that is, and we're still coming through.
We're still strong.
We're still strong and it's an important day for tomorrow and for all the teachers out there and students, you know, have a good day tomorrow. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to stick with the ladies, so let me go with Ms. Stacy next.
I'd like to pass something out, Mr. Crawford. I was busy tonight, I had a teacher on the phone. I almost couldn't get to the board meeting. I had a teacher on the phone and I had my copy machine running like wildfire with no ink in it and having a very difficult time. So I've made y'all some copies of some things, of some interesting things that I think that we need to know as a school board, that possibly Mr. Tomlin doesn't know, and I'd like Mrs. Morris to weigh in on some of this also. You know, one thing I hope when I die, I stand before God and he goes, Nancy, you don't have any talents left because you used them all up. And I'm going to use them up on teachers. I'm not going to have any left and so I'm going to beat this dead horse. I'm not done, Mr. Crawford. And I've got some documentation there I want y'all that's going to go along with what I'm saying, that you can look at later. We have not been totally told the truth yet about our continuous subs and probably not by design because I do not believe anyone is dishonest in our district, Mr. Tomlin. And I believe all of our employees, all of our administrators, want what is the very best for our students. But some people can ignore reality and believe they are the government, so they are immune from consequences. But being a businesswoman retired, I know that when I made a financial mistake, I suffered consequences. And bad financial choices just result in bad consequences, for which I will share lots of information with you tonight with lots of supporting documentation. I believe that possibly we haven't gotten the exact correct picture yet because things are so confusing here at the first of the year and all of our administrators are new at what they are doing. And I know they're doing a good job and they're doing the best they can do, that anyone could do, when first moving in. But I believe possibly because of so much happening at once, they can't see the forest for the trees. I, on the other hand, have been following school board issues longer than many of the new administrators because they were trapped in schools and I was trapped in the trenches, working with Tallahassee and working with parent activists and challenging school boards for two long decades. I do not believe anything is being skillfully hidden from us about these teachers that we're not paying properly. But from the first month of school, it has just been so overwhelming, I believe, for us to get everything all on the same page and we have received contradicting information, as we all know, from the workshop on Thursday as part of our discussions. It isn't really overwhelming me at all because I really like solving problems. So, since the workshop last meeting was Thursday, I have worked, and I'm sorry, Ms. Lisa, I always say your name wrong, Mrs. Krasowska, I've worked with Ms. Lisa, I'll call her, and Mrs. DeBuler, to pull together some documents since last week that I needed that would give me a snapshot of one full day in the life of this certified sub-process to give you all a true picture of what's happening. Granted, today the numbers are different, but that's okay. The scenario is the same as it was on Thursday, just different names on the sheets. However, the certified versus the non-certified picture is the same on that sheet. So I have something from Mrs. Mueller in a very organized fashion, which I have in the packet, which I will share with fellow board members, and I am supplying you with supporting documents to substantiate what I'm saying. The mere fact that none of my fellow board members seem to know that 18% of our continuous subs that were teaching in the classroom and for a year had a two-year college degree or less, 18% of them, or they had flunked their teaching exam, so they were not eligible for certificates. Yet, they were teaching in our classrooms and not until I told you, did you even know that. So here is the reality that I will not ignore because the consequences are undeniable. We even have teachers in the classroom at a high school teaching college prep classes that doesn't even have a two-year degree. Another fact I'd like to share is that we have approved option four to pay our teachers. That means that we are $880,000 short from option five, which would have been paying the teachers full amount, because we do have 88 teachers as of Thursday in, that were on the list of the certified subs. We've not used the 100, we haven't gotten to the 100 yet. We had, I think we got up to 92 or three at one time, but by Thursday, we were down to 88. I have no doubt that the other 12 pictures, teachers of the 100 slots might legally be classified as substitutes, but we do need some substitutes that are not covering the full year and they will probably be used for the balance of those openings. But paying our teachers per board salary schedule seems so close now that I may be only $10,000 per teacher away from it, but yet I'm so far away now needing only $880,000. But the administration has set a million aside for raises of non-instructional employees and the only way to get that million was to reduce our board-approved salary in board policy for 100 teachers by the amount they needed to give those raises. The only way they could get it was to take $10,000 from 100 teachers. The reality is that we were almost there and I just cannot ignore the consequences because the board's action affects hundreds of students who will be taught by a combination of teachers who are either totally uncertifiable, for which 18% of those teachers that we had on Thursday are uncertifiable, or they have certificates that were deemed eligible by our HR department, but yet there is no status of their, no SOE for these teachers that was received from the State Department of Education. Our district just kind of looked at the transcripts and made their decision. So we still have 21 teachers who are not officially certified and they do not have an SOE. The problem with that, Mrs. Morris, that you can easily pull up in statute 1012.37, is that we find the Department of Education does not investigate the misconduct of any teacher that is not certified or has not filed for eligibility. Of those 88 teachers, approximately 40, 18% of them fall in the non-certifiable and then the rest of them, the other part of that 40% falls in the, have not received the status of eligibility from the Department of Education. So therefore, if they did something in our district in a classroom, Department of Education would not even investigate it because by doing so, they wouldn't have any certificate or any status of eligibility to apply it towards. So therefore, they could leave our district, not tell Alachua County they ever worked here, do the same thing there and have a clean slate at the Department of Education when they finally do file for their statement of eligibility document. Their slate would be clean. Document two clearly states that only certified teachers are to be in our classrooms and that only a certified or applicant for Florida educator certificate will be investigated by the DOE. So we have, and document one, by the way, was the one that Mrs. Mueller gave me, that shows all of our subs exactly where we were on Thursday. Fact three is that the Florida State Department of Education and federal government require that we have only certified classroom teachers or we lose federal funding. Fact four, we have been doing the same thing in this district that K-12 Charter School Corporation has been alleged of doing. And according to the newspaper, they are currently being investigated by the Department of Education's Office of Inspector General for not having certified teachers in the classrooms. Exactly what they were turned down in the state for, we're doing that. They are allegedly in trouble for doing the exact same thing that we have done for years and we wonder why we're the only district, I guess, around here that's doing what we're doing. It's because it's not appropriate. This board tonight will allow, this board vote tonight will allow us to continue doing this very illegal practice because we are certainly fraudulently accepting federal dollars for which now I have been made very much aware of. And I happen to know that the federal government has already been contacted, but no particulars shared with them. But I was told it is definitely a potential violation to the Florida DOE Race to the Top Agreement that we do not have certified teachers in our classrooms. I realize fraud is now the unintended consequence of this practice because we got by with it in small fashion for years and now we are simply addicted to cutting costs that has made a program that was illegal in the first place now getting bigger and getting the attention of many. Are we really wanting to compromise our entire school system for $880,000 in salary that our board-approved salary schedule says we owe teachers? If we want to give raises to the employees, the other employees, then I would do everything humanly possible to help find those dollars within the budget for that. But do we really want to take a chance of losing multi-millions of federal dollars because we're not using certified teachers in our classroom? If you do not believe me, I have document number three in your packet for your review that I pulled right out of the contract with Race to the Top out of the Florida Department of Education booklet to show you. All through it, it says, we are required to use certified teachers. And if you look on page 82 of document three, you will clearly see that our course code directory references the courses and requisite teacher credentials. They must be certified. Fact three, the Florida Department of Education rule, backed up by statute, tells this board that any educator, including administrators- that any educator, including administrators, Mrs. Ely and Mr. James, who are willing to hire or know about the practice of using uncertified teachers can have their certificate sanctioned. So, in a matter of thirty minutes, I could send a complaint, or someone could send a complaint, to the DOE on every principal that has one of these subs that they have hired in their classroom for a year that is not properly certified. The administrators would be sanctioned on their certificate. That is the kind of position, this addiction we have to saving money in this way has put our administrators in. Please see document six, and it clearly tells us in state statute that this is the case. Fact six, this document should be the scariest of all that I will share with you, five, with the five of us. I'm supplying you with document five. That tells us our general powers are to perform duties assigned by law and carry out the purposes and objectives of the Education Code, which clearly says we must have a certified teacher in the classroom. Yet eighteen percent of our supposed certified subs are not even certifiable and most don't even have two years of college or they haven't passed, they cannot pass their state certification. Another twenty-four, approximately twenty-four percent of those eighty-eight do not hold a statement of eligibility. So misconduct could not even be addressed by the Department of Education on those people because we chose to make them eligible ourselves instead of running it through the Department of Education. We chose to look at their eligibility transcripts and that sort of thing and make our own judgment instead of having a status of eligibility. Besides that, even the ones who are truly certified, we have very few highly qualified in that group for all kinds of obvious reasons. So, document five is why I'm addressing this with you on television tonight, School Board Attorney. Statute one-oh-zero-eight-point-three-two, State Board of Education Oversight Enforcement Authority, is included in your packet I gave you. Clearly does not blame anyone. Mr. Tomlin, you're clear. Mr. Langford, everyone's clear for what we are doing. It doesn't blame the superintendent, but says, and it's in your packet, the statute itself, "District school boards shall be primarily responsible for compliance with law and state board rule. Had the superintendent of the past and present simply followed school board policy where the job description of the teacher and salary schedule is addressed as well as certificate requirements, we would not have this exposure to possibly being challenged by the state and the federal government by people in this community who are taking this to the federal government for violation of federal law." However, it isn't Mr. Tomlin or Mr. Yancy or anyone that gets blamed, it is the school board. So possibly they did not know in this district that the administrators possibly and probably didn't know, they were throwing all of us school board members under the bus. This is out of control and is even growing more complicated by the day because this school board was not told that we have people with less than an AA degree teaching college prep in a high school. You would not know any of this had it not been for my research. This continuing sub-issue in our district can cause us all kinds of legal issues to include the fact that per statute one-zero-one-two-point-three-seven, which I have included, we are also throwing our paraprofessionals under the bus because if they are working under a certified teacher, they have all the same protections that the certified teacher has. But you throw them under the authority of an uncertified teacher, the paraprofessional loses some of that protection and then just has the protection of a non-instructional person in the district. For proof of that statement, I have enclosed statute for you in document number four. Fact number seven, as if this had not mushroomed enough yet for us board members, document eight from our own new teacher orientation handbook, page fifteen, that starts out with a nice welcome from Mr. Tomlin. And then on page fifteen, it clearly says, "Under the principal's responsibilities from the No Child Left Behind Act." Now this is given to every single new teacher hiring the district, folks. This is coming out of our booklet. I have a copy for you in there also, I think, I do, I put a copy of that in there for you too. "We are to hire highly qualified substitutes for continuous subs." To show you one more time how the federal government, No Child Left Behind, will feel about what we are doing. It's cheating one hundred teachers out of ten thousand dollars a year of our board-approved salary for certified teachers so we can give raises to other employees really worth risking the loss of millions and millions of federal dollars. When we can help, we can still give raises and we can look for money to give the other employees raises just the same. This board member, Nancy Stacy, says no, but the rest of you will have to decide that for yourselves. But for me, I now see why we had to have a board policy. But unfortunately, our board policy has been bastardized along with the teaching profession we have bastardized in Marion County, Florida. I will be keeping a copy of this televised school board meeting where I brought this to everyone's attention and this board member wants you to understand that this school board now cannot say that we were not publicly informed, that we are fraudulently receiving federal dollars by making teachers the scapegoats of our poor financial planning. Thank you.
Ms. Stacy, I don't think you have all your facts right and I would suggest that you talk to Mr., I would suggest you talk to Mr. Tomlin and other people of the leadership team before you spend fifteen minutes talking to the public because it's not all correct.
Mrs. Ely, when someone's wrong and they won't admit it, they usually get angry, so I understand your hostility.
Why don't you talk to him?
That's fine.
Talk to him.
I fully understand your hostility because you know I'm right.
I have some concerns too. Ms. Stacy, at this point, I mean, we've passed the budget, right?
That's fine. We have, but we can amend the budget, that's not a problem.
Hold on, I'm just wanting, I want you to listen for a second, focus with me on this. If we decide to make all these teachers, make all the certified subs, teachers, that would require, we would have to post their jobs so some of them could lose their job. We're aware of that. We would have to start looking at closing schools, having a four-day work, all the things we set aside.
For eight-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars out of a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand million dollar budget.
No, that was just, that was just about furlough. Furlough was a reduction of vacation days to eight-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars.
No, we need eight-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars to pay our teachers involved.
I understand what you're saying, but what I'm saying is, what you're proposing is to fire them now, all the certified subs that do not have, are not eligible. Also fire the other ones who are eligible because if we post those jobs, we definitely are going into an area where those jobs would have to be posted. Anyone could come in from anywhere and be more eligible than them and get those jobs. And so some of those teachers that are there now, which is my concern.
Well, the principal chooses his employees, he chooses his teachers, and if the teachers are not doing a good job and he would rather have someone else there, then I think that's better for the classroom anyway.
Well, I, I.
You know, none of this matters, I've shared with you the fact that we can do it. The federal government gave us the phone number to the Department of Education in authority person to handle this and he believes we have a potential violation in Marion County.
I see that and if we do, then I'm going to ask the, if we do, Mr. Superintendent and to our chair, is to look into it and possibly if we have to look at the areas with our attorney, with our attorney, that we need to sit down and look at where we stand, what ramifications we have.
K-12 Charter School is in trouble right now allegedly for doing exactly what we're doing.
And I understand that we are at, I know this has been a, certified subs are not, are not teachers and the title says they aren't teachers, it says substitute. And we also understand that, I mean, how many of you all have substitute when you were in school? I know you did, Mr. Crawford, and I know you did too, Mr. James, possibly you were maybe one of my substitute teachers, but I don't think so. But I think what the area that you're going to, we really need to get into a little bit harder. There's some union words that may have to play. We have to look at this. If, I mean, I understand what you're saying. So then we would have to say to our staff, based on what you're saying, there are some things that could come up and we have to be ready for it just in case. We may have to post jobs, we don't know, but I'm asking the superintendent to look at it, to see where we would be, if we would have to go ahead and even change, get rid of having certified subs in the future. If you could just look into that for us and see where we stand and bring it to our road session, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. James.
First of all, I'd like to commend all of the staff for a job well done in terms of putting the budget together and how hard you guys really worked out there. And when I say that, I just want to thank you for your patience because I know that we are saying things that you have, may have heard and haven't heard or whatever. And it's always amazing to me that when I listen to things, I'm always trying to figure out where we're going with things. And I want to know at this point, where will our school board here begin to get focused on things now? We have, we have, we have already passed the budget and now we're beginning to focus in on our strategic plans and we need to do this thing. We did have some good, we did have some good dialogue at our, at our work session in reference to the budget. Okay, but when I sit here at night and I listen to all of this stuff where we don't have pros and cons, because I know Mrs. Kusaka would love to come up here and rebuttal, rebuttal some of this stuff, but I'm not going to ask you to do that because I know that we need, as a board, we need to focus in on what we are about. And this is what this is about to mean. Board, we need to focus. I know we have a lot of people out there just sitting out there just listening at this stuff and boom, boom, boom. You throw enough stuff up there, something will stick after a while. So, of what we're trying, what I would like to see us do as a board and as a district, to get focused now, we got one thing behind us, now let's look at what we can do. And this is what I, what I am saying. If my comments will do anything to this board, is let's focus in some things and let's, we have to know where we're going. And when we get to those work sessions and we have a chance for people to have a good back and forth conversation, and this is how we came up with the budget. Mr. Crawford did an excellent job, back and forth, back and forth. But it ain't been a one-way thing where you just throw stuff out there and people are sitting back there waiting on their turn. I don't like stuff like this. It's not what I'd like to be part of when I know we are better than this. Okay, that's my lecture for the night, Mr. Crawford.
Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary, okay. Ms. Morris, I'm going to come back to you in just a few minutes, I want to get the superintendent in here, Mr. Superintendent.
In reference to the most recent comments, I do not have a copy of the documents that were shared with you tonight that certainly be premature of me to make any statements. I know Mrs. Morris was also very interested in seeing those documents, so at some point in time, if I could get a copy of that, that'd be wonderful. Thank you very much. There are two issues that I'd like, I'd like to bring to the board's attention in reference to, and I think it's a great night to do this, in reference to financial matters. And that one is what our deputy superintendent for operations likes to call our Trash for Cash Program or Trash In, Cash Out Program, whatever you want to call it. We have a fantastic recycling program that is coordinated by our Technical Services Department and many of our schools, almost all of our schools are participating in this. And we are getting a few dollars back from the recycling program that we have, but more importantly, and I think we're teaching children a great thing about recycling and taking care of our resources. And we're also, the financial reward that we're seeing immediately is the reduction in the number of dumpsters that we're having to lease or rent. Now that may sound silly, but over the course of the year, we anticipate saving approximately seventy-one thousand dollars. Now that's not chicken feed, that's serious money that we're not having to rent dumpsters for because we are recycling things. That's one thing. And the second thing I'd like to share with the board and the public also is a more outstanding figure. And our Guidance and Testing Department did a calculation and an estimation of the value of scholarships that our seniors in the class of two thousand thirteen in all of our high schools received last year, including Bright Futures scholarships, private scholarships, scholarships in academies and things like that. This number really floored me. It is in excess of seventeen million dollars that our high school seniors received as an award or potential scholarship for them. And I think that's, that's a tribute to our, to their families, to the individual student work, and certainly to the hard work of our, of our teachers and administrators in our schools. That's all I have tonight, sir.
All right, thank you. Board members, a couple of quick comments because I, we have a request coming from our attorney this evening to us and I also have a request going to hers and that it may take a few minutes to do that. A couple of things that were, you know, mentioned this evening. One, on the comment on nine eleven. I don't think any American, it's one of those events that you always remember where you were at the, at the very moment. It has a, for me, it has a special meaning because I was actually in this building. I was chair that year and I was walking through the lobby. The receptionist comments that, because we usually have one of the cable channels on, on the, on the TV out in the lobby. Ms. Crawford, a plane just hit one of the World Trade Towers. And I thought it was, you know, probably some little private plane or something like that, you know, and said, oh gee, like that, and walked through, I was here to take care of a few things for, you know, that night's meeting, went walking back out to watch and actually watched the second plane hit the second building. And I've never forgot that and walked back in and told our, our people in the superintendent's office, I said, "You better turn the TVs on, we've got a problem." And we actually at that point had a, the superintendent and I at the time, who was Jim Warford, had a very lengthy discussion on whether we were going to actually be able to hold that meeting that night because nobody knew what was happening in this country. And we both came to the conclusion that we were not going to let a bunch of terrorists tell us how we were going to run our nation and we were going to have that meeting that night. It may not seem important in all that was going on, but it was our way of saying we are not going to let these people win. So I've never, excuse me, I've just never have forgotten that. Ms. Morris, I'm going to have a copy of the documents that Mrs. Stacy passed out, prepared for you. I am directing you to take a look at the legal ramifications, if you will get with Mrs. Flucketter. I think she has probably the idea of what Mrs. Stacy was talking about in areas where, and also will provide you with an actual copy of the, of the video on that. So if you need to watch anything to make sure you fully understand what Ms. Stacy said.
I'll give you, I'll give her a copy of what I said and that way she can track it.
That would, that would be, that would be great. We're going to get you a, a copy of this and I'm asking, excuse me, I'm asking you that you return a report to the board. All right. Now, Ms., and that's what I have for you. Now, Madam Attorney, you have something for the board.
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yes, there was one other thing I asked, and I asked Ms. Flucketter to put on it because, you know, it had to do with the budget and we've gotten off on so many other things, you know, this evening. And board members, you know that there has not been at times happiness between me and our, our risk management department. But I'm of firm belief, if you're going to criticize, that you should also praise. And one of the ways that we were able to find money this year, I think needs to be pointed out, because this is one of the ones that most people don't ever get to hear about. And that was the, the fine work that that department did in the area of our property and casualty insurance that we have to, that we have to carry. And they were able to, even though all I hear all the time is about everybody, insurance keeps going up, their, their homeowners and everything else, ours has not. They were able to, to, to work to make sure that all the people that, that do cover our, these areas for us, they were able to work and make sure that we maintained no additional or gained no additional cost, we maintained the, the same amount that we were, that we were paying. But I think the important part of the deal that I think the public needs to know about is the fact that even though we didn't, we weren't able to reduce the price, we were able to maintain something that... able to maintain something that, I can't think of another county in the state that has this. There may be some others, but you can count them on, on one hand. And that is the way that the, the insurance was structured. Most counties, if they have damage to a school, end up having to pay their deductible based on the total value of that school, which if you take one of our high schools, might be 15, 20 million dollars, whatever the, the property assessor has it on, you know, on the books for. We have it down to the building level. So it is very, it is much quicker for us to meet the deductible that we have and actually get money back should we have damage from, you know, one of these, as I jokingly call them, one of these windstorms that, that we may or may not get. And I can say that because I grew up in Miami and I'm used to hurricanes. But the fact that we've been able to do what other districts can't do, have a far superior policy for the same amount of money without seeing these, these increases, and I'm sure you all every day hear about the, the problems with Citizens Insurance and, and some of the others, and in fact, they were able to get us, we had one of our, one of our suppliers that we have built into our covenants that they have to maintain a certain rating level. The, that company's rating level, one of the companies, was reduced, and they were instantly able to replace that coverage at again, no cost. So I just want to, I want to thank our, our risk management department, Ms. Lively, all the staff over there that, that went through this. Literally, I can say this line by line, that that's how we saved some money, because there was money that was tentatively budgeted, I know, with the anticipation that there was going to be a cost increase. And when that didn't come about, that money was, we were able to roll it back into the general fund and, and make use of it. So that's, that's my point tonight. I just think the public needs to know about how sometimes, because we hear, well, how'd you all suddenly find all the money? Well, we found it by literally looking through.
Under every rock.
Under every rock, in the couch, you know, everywhere we could find, every closet, every place that we could find some money. And yes, it does, it does take us a little longer because you have to do a physical closeout of your, your previous budget. If you notice this evening, we were just getting around to approving last year's final budget figures and, and to make it that legal. So it is a process. It's not perfect. I have complained for years, the way the state mandates us to do it, and that's the way we end up having to do it. Coming from the business world, for the life of me, I've never understand why you look at what you're going to need in staffing and you, and you approve a staffing plan before you have an idea of what you can, what you can pay for. And, but that's the way they've done it, and you'll hear periodically us talk about the Red Book, and that is what is known as the accounting system for the state of Florida that has been created via the legislature and via the Department of Education. We ended up having to live with it. But like I said, thank you, Ms. Lively, thank you to your department. You saved us some money, and believe me, we have found homes for it. So.
Thank you, Morris.
Yes, sir. Now, Mrs. Morris, I apologize.
Board members, I'm notifying you that advice is needed once again regarding a pending litigation, which is styled CT versus the School Board of Marion County and others defended. The school board is represented by attorneys Usher L. Brown and Amy Pitch with the law firm of Brown and others for this litigation pursuant to section 286.0118 Florida statutes known as Government and Sunshine Act. On behalf of attorneys Brown and Pitch, I am requesting a session with the board for the sole purpose of discussing settlement negotiations and strategies related to this matter. I will ask the board secretary to cause reasonable public notice of the time and date of this session and the names of the persons attending to be published. It is suggested that the session be held at the end of your administrative briefing and work session, which is now scheduled for September 19th. We are saying approximately 11:30 a.m. It's required by statute only the chief executive officer or designee, board members and legal counsel can be present. As required by statute, I will ask a court reporter to record the session. Her notes will be fully transcribed after that and filed with the clerk of the school board, Brenda. Upon the conclusion of the litigation, those notes are made public record.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board hold an attorney-client session pursuant to section 286011, print eight, Florida statutes, to discuss the pending litigation.
Thank you. Board members, you've heard the, you've heard our attorney, you've heard the recommendation from the superintendent. Is there any objection to me instructing our attorney to proceed? Saying none. Madam Attorney, you have the permission.
Thank you.
At this time, I wish to acknowledge that the board members have received the attorney placement list for students through August 23rd, 2013. Are there any parents in the audience who wish to speak on behalf of a student regarding a disciplinary matter? Saying none. Is there anything that needs to come to the board at this time? Anything you all think of? If not, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Moved by Ms. Ely, seconded by Ms. Boynton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass 5-0. And Ms. Fluckheder at the time?
7:36.
We'll adjourn at 7:36.
Thank you.